Stick them on there. We can get them anywhere from thirteen to fourteen to fifteen dollars apiece. And we need approximately, I think seventeen of them if we put one. So that's really not a major cost, I don't think. But if you'll pay for them, we'll get them ordered probably from Johnson Sign or Stel- there's a company called Stello that's a dollar cheaper, but we don't know what shipping would be on.
Okay. So your direction there is get them, take the bill to Heather.
Okay. Do you think sticking them on the doors is appropriate? We've got glass doors down right beside the handicap sign, the handicap insignia that's on there.
Is there, would it create any issue where someone might not see someone else coming out a door?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
As long as it's not a safety issue.
I understand.
What do you guys think? Is that appropriate? Okay.
It's not the least expensive way out. We don't want to drive folks and put something up. With your permission.
Just a second. Come on.
I think on, certainly the signs on the, on the door, the ADA signs may need to be off to the side. There's a height and a distance from doors that they need to be for, for door numbers and those kind of things. If it's on the door, it may be an ADA issue that you might want to check first.
We'll check the file. We'll check ADA. Maybe we don't put them someplace after that. Thank you.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I appreciate your thoughts, but I, it may not be the, may not be the place for them either.
We may be able to even put these lower on the door. I don't know if there's a, there's no directive in the state issued, whatever you call it, to do it. You know, I don't think it's a sign. But we'll check further to make sure we don't get them in an improper place.
You, uh, I, I gave you the website and stuff, didn't I? That, what they have to say?
Uh, I think Mark's got it.
Okay, because, because it is, it is, uh, signs are required at all public entrances. Signs must read, "State law prohibits smoking within eight foot of this entrance," or similar language. And then they're available at that website. And I gave, I, I think I gave you the website.
I must have given it to Mark, but we'll make sure that we'll.
Yeah, I emailed it, because I, do you have email?
Mark does.
Yeah, I, okay. So, so don't get upset when I email Mark stuff, because I can, I can do that. And I'll, if it's for you, I'll tell, I'll, I'll make sure he knows it's for you, but yeah, okay.
We're, we're working together pretty much on all this.
I know, I know.
Is, on that, with this, I want to, again, I apologize for the late intrusion here, but we just literally got some of this information in the last few, well, the last hour. We've got, I don't know if the contract's been signed. I think you wanted, we wanted to run that by the consul for the heating system.
Oh, absolutely. That's, that's, you're on their, you're on their agenda.
I am not, but we may have to go under the commissioner's mandate, because we didn't know he was going to get all this until today, so.
Uh.
Under commissioner's time.
I'm sorry, Wednesday, 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 Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday. So I don't think it'll take long, but I wanted commissioners to be aware of, of things that are happening here.
Okay, okay.
Just for information, we've got some annex roof problems. We've got, the museum has requested some work.
All right. Before we really get into that though, let's, let's go, let's go back and finish, finish up the top, let's see.
Okay.
The top item on this sheet, okay? Because you did, uh, we, we had talked about this.
We have a contract for that. All that needs the signatures, you want to run it past the consul to make sure that it's okay with them before you sign it.
Councilman Barrett wanted that.
Right.
They, 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 they've talked about it. In fact, they, they've moved it up. They weren't going to talk about this until June.
Oh, okay.
But for your sake.
Right.
They moved it up till Wednesday.
Right.
It's very, it's very much, it is on their agenda, isn't it?
I'm pretty sure there's some mention of it.
Okay, okay, I have the agenda over there. Because I believe, I believe in talking to the chairman, he'd like to get moving on this project. It's a, a timing of weather and everything else.
Right.
So, so I think we're clear on that one.
Okay.
And we're clear on the bottom, smoking prohibition signs. Now go ahead and talk to us about the other items.
The next one is the museum roof repair. Danny Tippman approached me with a bid to get it done. It was, but it was very incomplete and not, it wasn't consistent in what was needed over there. So we took the liberty of getting two or three quotes. You can see lepers from, it's quite a bit higher than Smith's for basically the same thing, as far as we could see. So this is Mark and I's recommendation after going over the, over the bids on them. That money, I don't know if you, I don't know where that comes from. If that comes out of Cubecap, uh, my, and, and the, uh, but you can read there what's involved in that. Man, they was going to do some covering up with some paint on some eavesfouts and that stuff. We got to looking at it, and the eaves troughs on the building are rusted out. There's no use painting them and putting leaf protection on them when they're leaking. So that is a major expense that went up for there.
Did Danny mention whether or not there's a budget line item for maintenance?
Uh, I don't think there is for the museum. If I understand right, it was just kind of an agreement that the county would maintain that, that building as far as maintenance, and I guess he's, this is maintenance.
Right.
But those are the four things that have to be done over there.
I'm familiar with the people that did quote one, okay? They've done lots of work for me. I, it, it's just, I'm, I'm struggling with thinking there's eighteen thousand dollars difference.
Mark and I did the same thing. There's a big difference.
Did you talk to Joe or Josh?
It was Josh that was out and looked at the building and give us, uh. He, a lot of the cost is they was going to have to lease or rent a lift to get to the roof. Smith's think they can do it with the lift rented from B and J down here and get up on the roof and do that. So that, that was a three thousand dollar cost right there.
Okay.
And they, and they were considerably cheaper on the eaves.
I'm just, I'm just blown away like I'm sure you were.
We had, I had leper build, uh, well, you can see on the roof repair on the annex, on the next item down.
No, I do, I do.
It was a similar situation.
I do, I see it, I see it.
And I, Mr. Barrett told me the same thing. They did wonderful work and they did a great job for him, but I, I can't argue with the numbers, I guess.
No, no, sir, you can't. And it may be a situation of how busy they are.
I think that's something to do with it.
It's like, okay, you want to pay us, we'll be here, but, um, I can't come up with another explanation there. I, I absolutely positively think their work is wonderful. Uh, so, Smith Roofing, bonded, licensed.
They basically took over Goldwood's business, which they've been doing for several years.
Okay, okay, I, okay.
So that's who, who that is.
Okay, I didn't know that was a choice there, okay?
Uh, from that, we go to the annex roof, which is basically that parapet wall around it. It's been on there, I can't tell you exactly when that was done, fifteen, eighteen years ago. We put a whole new roof on it while the part, it's not a rubber roof, it's an asphalt buildup roof that they built up over the parapet walls. Well, those are, over the time, have cracked and dried out, and we're getting water going down through that into the wall. So they talk about the drip edge cap, they're going to make a caplet similar to this building where it goes clear over the wall down most sides, leave enough room if we have to re-rough it that there's room to get up underneath it, so we wouldn't have to remove it, it won't be a waste, and it'll eliminate that water getting in that wall. The other, the drip edge above the windows is those east windows where the garage door headers used to be. They put a piece of metal in there to lay brick on, and they're not, that was, from what we can get strictly the purpose of them, because there's another I-beam back in there that's supporting the weight. But the water's coming down, running back and down the wall on them, and we're getting water down through them. So that's the other part of that bid on, on the annex there. Uh, the windows, they're, I think we just need some new jack handle around some of the windows on that east side. Uh, and they were, they was going to address that. So that's, that's what that cost is. And there again, uh, if we can use Cubecap money for that, it'd be great, because we've got, we're going to have some additional expense on some other items coming up as, as far as the boiler and, I don't think, I don't think we've got anything, any surprises coming with the restoration of the courthouse, but you don't know once we get into it what might happen.
Right.
I, I just wanted commissioners to be aware of what we was doing.
I appreciate it.
And perhaps, uh, the consul can, if they got time, can take a little look at this and give us their blessing or their, tomorrow, or Wednesday.
Gentlemen, do you want to just send them on to council?
Yes, that's favorable.
Okay. I'm sorry, yes, favorable? I'm sorry. Make a motion?
I'd so move. We asked the chairman to present the favorable recommendation to council to go ahead and do this work. We can't have water inside.
No.
That's it.
I'll second. We have motion and second, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same side. I will give it a favorable recommendation then on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, Danny, uh, I don't see Atlas anywhere.
They were supposed to show up today. They called and because of the threatening weather and the fact that they're not done with the job they're on. They said perhaps the end of the week, first of next week. So they backed us up a week.
What? Is there, I, I'm sorry, I don't even know when Old Settlers Day is, but does their-
Fourth week in June.
Does the time permit them to be done and out of here?
They say, they have informed of that date, and they say they will be done by then.
Okay, okay.
So that's the information.
Just a safety issue for them as well as us, so.
Well, if it doesn't happen, they'll have to, I'll inform them, they'll have to, if they got a machine, they'll have to park it someplace else for a week.
Boy, because you know what's going to happen if they don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. I'm sorry it took so long to get to here.
That's all right. Fine. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Uh, the, I know we individually kind of discussed this, but let me bring it back up again. Once again, the Bowen Center has sent us a request for money for two thousand and thirteen. Their request is one hundred seventy-six thousand dollars and some change, which represents a, a one point oh-three quotient, which I understand that. So it makes it up about five thousand dollars. Um, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with how the program, I understand the law says we got to do it. That part I understand, but, um, I, I, I think we're all in agreeance that he's going to come and talk to us, right? It's time, it's time for Bowen Center to, to explain to us. I don't, I honestly don't know what this county gets for a hundred seventy-six thousand dollars. I really don't, so.
Law is constant. They do everything for us. Serious mental disturbances to family issues, to budgeting, to try to help them out any way they can. He can explain it to you over here, but I think it's wise you have.
Can I ask you this? Is this really just a subsidy to maintain the operation here?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I under, that part, see, then I can kind of understand, because they do, run an office here and so. Okay, so he will be here. I, he didn't think he could make May twenty-first? You've talked to him since May?
He is, he's on the agenda for one thirty.
May twenty-first? Well, okay, he didn't think he could make that? Okay, good enough. All right, let's finalize this, this auction thing, what, what we want to do in, in, in this auction. What's your thoughts, county auction?
If we, and it's just my thought, if we move it off base and go to that residence, which the auctioneer wants to do, I would recommend we only sell the five cars.
Okay. I agree with Tom.
Was that a second, George?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and, and we could take a vote if you want, we'll vote on it, motion second? I agree. That, that's all we're really going to do, is get rid of those cars. We're not going to deal with anything else. I will tell the trustees.
Now, if they have a large item, I don't care what you want to do with that.
I think they should contact the auctioneer.
Okay, it has to be done by Wednesday.
That's right, that's right. Thank you. I will try to get that email out tonight to them. Yes, thank you. Um, they need to contact, I think they need to contact him. We're now out of the loop. Uh, so for our employees, you know, don't be gathering stuff you want to put in the auction, because at this time, we're not going to have an auction in 2012, except get rid of those cars. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, that input. Um, and then, and I think like the last thing I got on my list, I guess we got some other stuff here. Um, was I given a direction to go ahead and invite someone from the extension office to, to come in and kind of explain their charges?
I would ask that.
Okay, I will, I will deal with that. Okay. Uh, I'm dealing with some Amy stuff here. There's been some problems reported in the basement of this building. They cannot use their cell phones. They, they can't get out. It's, allow me to read this letter from Amy. I was asked by several people to look into this, meaning a way to fix the problem so the people in the basement can use their cell phones. It is a system where people can use their cell phones in the basement. No one can get reception, including the drug task force. If you're not interested in the project, I understand. I just want to make sure I pass along the concern of the people wanting this, especially when there are meetings down there. All right, so what, what Amy did for us was she got together with Butch and basically just said, Butch, what's it going to take to make sure we can use cell phones in the basement of this building? It's going to take twenty-two hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Will that help the reception that we have in the rest of the county building?
Boy, would, I would sure think it would. I would sure think it would cover the building. I would sure think it would. I think that's a, sorry. This estimate is to install a cellphone booster that could cover the entire government center with two antennas in the basement to boost a cell signal in the basement. This works for all cellphone providers. It's a two-year warranty on the cell system, one-year warranty on the labor. It would be, uh, dual-band cellphone amplifier, lightning protection splitter, jumper cable, a hundred-foot of antenna cable, indoor dual-band dome antenna, miscellaneous parts, shipping, handling, and labor. What, what's your thoughts? I, I'm not going to sit here and say it's not an issue, because I don't go down the basement, but if it's an issue, I don't know.
We have a, we don't have a outside in the records department. We don't have a land phone.
There's a land phone in the main conference room on both sides to dial it out.
I thought if she's up on a ladder, probably can't get to the land phone.
I, I guess my thought on this is we've got the drug task force down there, and it's either move them or do this. It's kind of my thought on it.
I really think this is for them. I, I, I don't, you know, public meeting, I really don't want to discuss why they need the cellphone usage down there. Um, you could meet privately with them and talk to them about it. I, that's not, that doesn't mean I'm saying we do it. I'm just saying that's, that's the issue. I thought we got her a cordless phone.
We did. I think, I think you're right.
But not cell, just a cordless landline.
Cordless, yeah, I think.
So I, I don't know if she, I don't know if she's involved. There are no other people in the, unless you're on break, you know, there's no other people. There is a big community room down there.
Did that come from the toll trainers, the lefty people? That was all the last couple of weeks.
You know, I, I don't have a, I don't have a feeling. This was, uh, this estimate was dated April the twenty-third, so it does go back a little ways.
All right, thank for drug task force. In fact, we have public meetings down there. Something would happen, we need nine-one-one after running, can't get in a door. I think it's a good twenty-three hundred dollar investment, so I would so move.
I agree with Tom. I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same. Um, is this something I take to council, or is it come out of our?
Or is there anything for phones or anything?
It's in you guys' budget. Phones are in the commissioner's budget.
Is there, what?
How are we looking? Can you tell us?
What's in?
We've got three thousand in cell phones, and still have twenty-one thousand in telephones, and we haven't used anything for internet service yet. Twenty thousand.
I would say take it out of the telephone one account, and if we get, oh, we always could transfer a line item later in the year. Add that twenty-one thousand, yeah, please.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, I think the, the last thing I, I have was, if you'll recall, to, in order for us to buy the next ambulance out of sequence, it was going to take an amendment to the community benefit agreement. We, we now have it. It's been produced by Parkview and researched by Mr. Sigler and approved. Basically, what it says is, pursuant to this agreement, on or about January one, two thousand and twelve, Whitley County purchased one ambulance with vehicle equipment. Whitley County agrees to purchase a second ambulance with vehicle equipment in two thousand and twelve, notwithstanding that the commitment of Whitley County to buy this second ambulance with vehicle equipment does not mature until after the hospital has purchased an ambulance with vehicle equipment for Whitley County out of its residence. As a result section, one of the agreements shall be revised to identify that Whitley County shall purchase its second ambulance with vehicle equipment in two thousand and twelve. An ambulance, including appropriate vehicle equipment, will be purchased by the hospital in two thousand and thirteen. Second ambulance by the hospital thereafter, including appropriate vehicle equipment. By this agreement, the hospital commits to purchasing no more than two ambulances with vehicle equipment during the term of the agreement. So it doesn't change the numbers, it just changes when they're, when they're bought. So I would entertain a motion to approve or not approve the agreement.
Uh, this money coming from the foundation or?
No, this is the seat, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My ears weren't working right. This is the money we put aside in the seated program for this year to get this ambulance.
We've already agreed to, to do this. Like you said, we're not changing the numbers that we talked about, it's just the timing.
Right.
Make a motion, we accept the, the community benefit agreement.
Second.
Have a motion second, further discussion. Hearing again, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same. Ladies and gentlemen, that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just one other thing.
You betcha.
I'm spending all this money today, I'm starting to feel like a county consultant instead of a commissioner here, but I would ask that the county consider spending five hundred dollars to the city for the flower fund, so that they can purchase flowers and things. They have asked us to, and we are trying to work with them to enhance relationships and things, and I think the worth five hundred dollars well spent, outside the beauty and the flowers.
Could that have been in the form of a motion?
Yes, it was.
Are these the flowers?
Okay.
Are these the flowers that you denied the first sale?
That's exactly what they are.
Well, I just wondered, because that field's too late up there.
That's right. Okay, we have motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same side. Pay the bill, please.
Okay.
Thank you, commissioner.
Sorry. That's all I will bring up.
Public? Anything but win? No, just kidding, I'm just kidding. Stanley was first, so, well, no, wait a minute, ladies first.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's right. Ladies first.
This, it, it is a win question, but it's a procedural question.
That's fine.
Um, is there a limit to the number of times that this ordinance can bounce back and forth between you to the plan commission to?
I wondered that too, but, but I'm, and I will find the answer out, but my guess is no, as long as it's staying active, I'm guessing no. Just a guess on my part. I think the problem, if that's the right verb, the problem would come in if it's just sitting and nobody's doing anything, then that, that to me would be an issue, so.
I would hope not over twice. We send it back.
Yeah, I do too. I do too. I, I think.
I'm going to get it off the burner, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and the, the plan commission has never really had an opportunity to, to hear us, George, obviously, so I think they'll just have, there'll be some give and take, and I, I'm really optimistic we'll get this job done, so. Good question. Yes, sir, Mr. Crump?
Well, my comment was, really kind of aside from anything you've discussed all day long, except when Woodland Lakes came up relative to Camp Samaritan, but I was going to say that, um, as, as you all know, I've almost become a fixture in this room, I guess, in the last year at least, and I've, I've learned to greatly respect what you folks have to deal with, and I've watched what you do. And then, as I listened to Michael today, as he presented his highways presentation, I realized the reason for what I saw at the Woodland and Lakes meeting. Lisa Ledgerwood, the lady there that's their part-time assistant, now that they've lost the, the full funding, had some very complimentary things to say about Whitley County when the introductions were taking place, and about the participation of the county and things that have gone on through them in the past. And I, I almost got the sense that this is a county that others would like to be. And, and I think it starts in this room, very honestly, because of the things that you folks try to do and, and try to look- through them in the past, and I, I almost got the sense that this is a county that others would like to be, and, and, um, I think it starts in this room, very honestly, because of the things that you folks try to do and, and try to look at what's going on and keep a, uh, keep a, a foresight sense of how things take place, but it's such a simple thing as this dust spray thing strikes me as the kind of thing that you do because you demonstrate through that that you do care about what's going on with the people out in the county, and, um, and so my comment really lands on, on just passing that along to you and saying that you, um, you're doing things that other people look at, and I think they'd like to be there, I think they wish they had a way.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, um, I, I feel, and I, I, I've been around, and this is not a knock on other commissioners, not a knock on other commissioners, I'm just simply saying, I think these three people up here really, really wanna serve our citizens, and, and I really do, so I'm, I am very proud to be a, a, a part of these two, they may not claim me, but I'll claim them, so, thank you for your comments.
One thing I will tell you that, in, in one of the meetings, we have commissioners meetings, uh, over a ten-county area, and, uh, one of the Allen County Commissioners I was talking to, um, said that, uh, they're, they're very envious of the way that Whitley County operates, and, uh, and that was Allen County.
Well, what I noticed on that, in that board meeting was that at least one of the people there was a commissioner, and that's okay, I mean, I, but what, what went on in the back of my mind was, now maybe it's just because this is for this individual a special thing that they really, really, really care about, could be that too, but I also wondered if they had resources and he wa- and they didn't have anyone else that would do it too, and, and I think that, but I just have really begun to grow that sense and, and wanted to say it publicly, the, the sense has been growing for some time, and it comes out of how, how you do what you do.
We appreciate it, we appreciate all our citizens, so, um, with that.
Oh.
I'm so sorry, Tim.
I know Amy's not here, and you did her work, but you can.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Do you got the circuit breaker summary, if you have any questions?
Mm-hmm.
I've started getting these back, just think of any companies, like Jim Bayman gave me one for Bayman Auction, um, Bill Overdale gave me one, one more, any one that we would enter our pay-up bill to, that you would have affiliation with in any way, shape, or form, just make sure they're on file so we can get them over to the clerk's office.
If, and, and if you're, if you're not certain, fill one out.
Fill it out, please.
Fill it out, you can't hurt a thing.
I'd rather be safe than sorry.
No, can't hurt a thing, so.
Um, Allen T.O., you got a copy as requested, his first payment minus the rent, to go ahead and distribute his monies?
I, yeah, I thought I sent that through and said pay it, 'cause that's, that's the seated, that's the seated.
Right, you are.
Yeah, 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 so, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I thought I said pay it, but, yeah, for gosh sakes, get the man his money.
Okay, um, the other issue, this is, um, let me know, is our mail machines need redone, postage machines, I'm not having a problem with the one in the auditor's office, but they're having headaches with the one over at the clerk's office, we had some quotes coming in from Penny Bowes, our machines are almost obsolescent.
Okay.
From Hassler, we own the machines, so we're pretty much just paying maintenance, they can lease us a machine for the two-year contract at the same or less than what we're paying now, and I said, but we'll never own the machines, and they wanna know why we'd ever wanna own the machines, because all we'll do is sell them at the county auction for nothing, so if we go with Penny Bowes, upgrade the machines, we'll pay something we already have appropriated, do you want Debbie and I to meet individually with you, or do you want Penny Bowes to come to meeting? It'll be a signing of a contract.
I guess, I guess for me, I'm only gonna speak for myself, I, I guess I'd like to see a quote.
Okay.
I like to see a quote both ways.
All right.
So, I understand their, I understand their thoughts, but when you do lease, you never own it, it's.
It is a contract, and that's our job.
Yeah, yeah, so, I wanna see the, I wanna see the information before I make a decision.
I'll get that around for you and put it on the twenty.
Did you know you don't have to lick stamps anymore?
I know.
They come, oh, okay, I didn't know, you know.
We don't run that much postage too, seriously, our postage, we cut the budget in half, if you remember, it's in your budget, because we don't mail anything anymore.
That's, that is right, and, and that's true, and, and so maybe you, we, I, maybe we won't rethink the whole thing, so.
Well, we definitely don't wanna own a machine that right now is no good to anybody.
All right, all right.
Um, y'all got your letters from?
Yep, got it, doesn't, I don't see it as county business, but.
Okay.
I mean, I, anybody else? Okay.
Any other questions on what you got, rest of it's normal.
Okay.
I'm done.
Thank you all, thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming.
I had one item, I gave Amy a proposal for, uh.
Thank you, Otto.
And the city has that same proposal, and I haven't been able to give that proposal to the library, so I haven't met with the right person yet, um.
You wouldn't happen to have a copy with you, would you?
In my van, I do.
Well, the reason I ask is I, I, I think that the, the question that came to be is, is, looked like we'd have an employee, employee, it, it, that, that, it, the way it looked, the county was gonna pay an employee and, and.
It'd be like a matching grant, the city would put in forty thousand dollars worth of equipment, and that equipment would be at the library.
Right.
And they would then have to, so the county would have benefit of having their meeting stay.
I understand that, understand that, but what does the county pay for? City's buying equipment, doesn't it read that the county does the employment?
Yeah, for whatever amount of, you, the city and the county would have to get together and figure out how many years, how many meetings.
I, I think that, I think that will take, I think that's gonna take further discussion before we can make any decision, um, I will tell you that Amy absolutely passed it along, Amy, it's not hidden on Amy's desk somewhere, it's passed along.
I didn't think that.
Well, I just wanna make sure you know that, now she did, and, um, I, I, I know myself, I stumbled over the, or, or, or got hung up on the, the, what appeared to be a county employee, so, um, it's probably something that we need to, to discuss, and it's gonna be an employment issue, we need to discuss it, it, in different.
Right, and my only reason why I'm bringing it up now would be, I think someone, either commissioners, councilperson, should be considering maybe have a, a person talk with the city to see what their idea is of what, it's just to get the ball rolling, instead of just, uh, having.
All right, I, I will, I will meet with the mayor, I'll meet with the mayor then, and, uh.
And he has a copy too, so.
Okay, I owe you an apology anyway, so, I'll meet with the mayor. Okay.
Um, one more thing, I would like one of you three to meet with John Willpea on the refinancing of the government bond, so you can hear what he is recommending or not recommending that we do this.
Chairman, I think, uh, that's fine, and then, we're good.
No, I, I, that's fine, I'll, I'll be glad to do that, I'll be glad to do that, okay.
It's ready to go, so.
Well, how soon, I mean, is, is anybody pushing us on this, I would think they would be, but.
On bond.
Uh, and, and.
And Lisa Lee and I still.
And how pushing, I mean?
Um, the rates are down, that's pushing.
Yeah, okay, 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 all right, well, I know, I know everybody at On Bond, Lisa Lee, so that's, it'll be a problem, I'll be, I'll be careful, so.
Do you, have you been talking about the question about that, what the question was?
Uh-huh, possibly paying more than, saving, right, so, well.
John still recommends it, so you talk to John.
Okay, on the surface, that sounds hysterically funny, but, okay, you know what I'm saying?
I do too, I just, I, okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thanks for coming, young lady.
Thank you.